Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise with us for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as diverse community, a community of backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal, that is the betterment of this city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom, and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Morosco, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Martinez, Deputy Mayor Garcia, and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
Do you enjoy the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready to begin?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. This meeting is called to order. Councilmember Morosco.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Garcia.
Here.
And I, Mayor White, am here. And we are going to go ahead and move on to our proclamations. And we'll start with Pollution Prevention Month, and I would ask Kim Silva to meet me down here at the podium. Thank you all. It is my honor and privilege to proclaim September 16th through 22nd as Pollution Prevention Week in the city of Escondido. And I will present this proclamation. I'm presenting it to you, correct? Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
And you're free to say a few words.
On behalf of the city's Environmental Programs Division, I want to thank Mayor White and the city council for taking the time to recognize this week as Pollution Prevention Week. Pollution prevention is any activity that reduces, eliminates, or prevents pollution at its source. This is an effort that involves all of us. So, thank you to all the city staff who work every day to keep our community safe and clean, and to all the members of the public who take small actions every day to prevent pollution. If you want to take action for pollution prevention this weekend, please come out for our Coastal Cleanup Day on Saturday, September 21st. Coastal Cleanup Day is an annual partnership with I Love a Clean San Diego, and Escondido staff is going to be hosting two sites this year, one at Escondido Creek, near the city's wastewater treatment plant, and one at Dixon Lake. You can sign up by visiting the Environmental Programs webpage under Education and Outreach, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you. Council, want to come down for a photo with everybody? Thank you. We'll move on to presentations, and first up is the Friends of Daily Ranch.
Thank you very much. My name is Rick Ricurio, and I'm an original board member of the Friends of Daily Ranch and very pleased to be here. And the purpose is just to touch base, to introduce our organization to you if you aren't familiar with it, and to thank you. Those are the reasons. But also to just go over some of our accomplishments. And I welcome any questions if you have them along the way. So, it all started back in the 1990s with the support from the council majority and the community using the Sewer Futures Funding Mechanism. The city initiated a process to purchase what had been known as the Daily Ranch, and it was completed in 1997. And it was designated as a Conservation Mitigation Bank, which is essentially a nature preserve, an open space preserve. And at that time, the city council gave our brand-new organization, the Friends of Daily Ranch, its blessing, its official blessing. And we were formed as a 501(c)(3) with the mission to support the city in continued preservation of the ranch and to educate the public about responsible recreation and the biological integrity of the ranch. Now, in 2009, another city council passed Resolution 200946 to, quote, "recognize and acknowledge the benefits to Daily Ranch that are provided by the Friends of Daily Ranch." So, we're very proud of that. One of our most proud accomplishments is our annual field trip program. We invite every single seventh grader from all the public middle schools in EUSD up for a full-day outdoor learning education program. And I've been involved personally with that as one of the docents. And the kids come up there, and they have a great time. They get hands-on learning experience. We have had 16 years of these trips, a lot of volunteer hours, as you can see there, and a lot of students served. We estimate over 30,000 and over 250,000, and we really thank generous donations from various entities that you can read there, the Escondido Community Foundation, San Diego Foundation, and the rest, including private individuals. We're very proud of this program. And in the COVID year, the trips had to be canceled, but we, the Friends, sprang into action again with help from the Escondido Foundation and the San Diego Foundation. And we produced a series of 21 videos that replicated the field trip for the kids who couldn't actually come up there because everything was canceled. And those videos are still online and available to the public at our website and on YouTube. This is a group of the people that helped put the videos together that year. A lot of ranger help, that's for sure. Our field trips have some, as I say, hands-on learning experiences for the kids, including this live snake that the kids are getting to experience and marching up the hill to Daily Ranch. Another accomplishment is a brand-new one. A week from tomorrow, the Escondido Community Foundation will be granting the Friends just under $33,000 for a variety of improvements and things that will help the city's budget. These are items that otherwise would be coming out of your general budget that our 501(c)(3) organization applied for and won. Picnic tables, benches, a trail marker system that will make safety a priority by making it easier for emergency response, three new bilingual informational signs, another kiosk and improvements at the Cougar Pass Trailhead, and recycling and disposal receptacles. So, we're very, very happy to help the city in that way with this monetary grant. Another one is the historical structures up at the ranch. The historic barn that dates, it's the oldest structure up there, dates to the 1880s, Redwood Barn. And the four utility buildings that are just north of the ranch house, we, as an organization, got with hammers and nails out there and made them structurally strong and saved them, basically, from deterioration. Thousands of volunteer hours, over $15,000 of our money for that. So, that's the barn. And if you look inside right now, it's all structurally reinforced. And there's a couple of our board members in there that put in countless hours on every Saturday for many months to make it safe and up to code. We also have acquired historical ranching equipment, and we display it. Again, money spent, countless volunteer hours, informational signage there. It's just there between the utility buildings and the ranch house that you can see there. That's our display. We're proud of that. The interpretive signs and kiosks, this was sort of my baby. We have installed 14 interpretive signs, and 12 of them went in just last year, topics about all sorts of things of interest to the public, the plants, the animals, the habitat, the history, and the Native Americans and the bird life. A lot of money spent and a lot of volunteer hours, and we're very proud of those. And you can see some of them in the background. In the foreground is the kiosk that we paid for. The rangers, of course, built it, but we supplied the materials for it and the money for it. And this is an example of one of the three Native American signs. All of them are bilingual, but the three Native American ones are trilingual because we not only have English and Spanish, we have the Native American and Luceneal language. So, we're very proud of that. Had a lot of help from other community organizations. This year, we also initiated a quarterly event up at the ranch house called the Daily Ranch Discussions with Friends. And it's free, and it's held at the ranch house. And thanks very much to the city of Escondido for supplying a shuttle to get people up there that otherwise wouldn't be able to hike. It's a pretty strenuous hike from the parking area up to the ranch house. This was one of the presentations that was in July. We had really good turnout. This was the April one, and we packed that ranch house with people, and they were very appreciative. It's all free of charge. We have installed some field cameras for wildlife monitoring, and we're very proud of that. Those are some of the pictures we've gotten. And I also want to give a special thank you to the city for initiating biological monitoring, which is, actually, it was supposed to have been done every year, but this year, the wildlife agencies met with our superintendent, Brian Thill, who's here in the back, and you are initiating a professional company to do a baseline biological monitoring. So, we thank you very much for getting that going this year. We put out brochures that are free. This is a 20-page trail guide with beautiful pictures and highlights and maps. We put out a brochure, again, with rules and tips and maps. These are all free. At the trailheads, we have dispensers. If people want to make a donation, they can. We also have a plant guide that's free, or, again, if you want to donate. One of the things we did a few years ago, when some property adjacent to Daily Ranch was available for purchase, there was a Save 1,000 Acres, and the Friends donated $50,000 toward that effort, which was successful. It was some land over by Lake Woolford, and it was some land in Hidden Meadows that was acquired as permanent open space. So, we contributed to that cause as well. And we also have an annual tradition of a picnic in early November where we celebrate our success, and we give people a free lunch and beverages, and you're all invited. It'll be the front page of the newsletter that Zach over there will give you later. We hope to maybe see you there. I know it's right before Election Day, so it's a busy time, Saturday, November 2nd. But again, thanks to Brian Thill and the city. The city provides a shuttle for people to get up there that otherwise couldn't. And so, we hope that you can attend that and the public. This was from previous years, so we have good turnout on that, too. So, our vision for Daily Ranch is, for the futures, continue to collaborate with the city and the public for sustainable recreation and guidance from federal and state wildlife agencies to protect wildlife and natural habitat, as well as the, it's a multimillion-dollar asset you have in Daily Ranch because the conservation mitigation credits have a value. Now, I know they haven't been purchased much lately in the last few years, but you have a value in the millions of dollars at Daily Ranch. And in order for those credits to be valuable, the biological integrity of Daily Ranch must be maintained. And the agreement for this was signed with wildlife agencies. And I just do want to add one thing that's not on the slide, that when you, as a counselor, are confronted with any kind of decisions about any sort of a project that could impact the integrity of Daily Ranch, such as the newly revived Daily Ranch Resort, you probably have heard of it. If you haven't, you will be, that I hope that you will consider the input and opinions of the wildlife agencies and the Friends of Daily Ranch when you make those decisions. And again, all our efforts, everything we do is dependent on cooperating and collaborating with the city staff, and they have been absolutely great over the years. We work hand-in-glove with them on everything we do. So, this is a thank you to you, the city, and to the staff, and we hope that that will continue. And as far as the public, we appreciate, we hope that they will continue to appreciate and respect Daily Ranch as the gem that it is. We have this wonderful 25 miles of hiking in our own neighborhood, and it's beautiful up there. And of course, we want them to be responsible users, and we hope that they might join our organization, too. And we have a website, dailyranch.org, to do that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share these things with you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time and for the presentation. Thank you for the work that you all do as an organization, as individuals, preserving the environment, preserving the habitat, preserving some of the precious history that we have up there. And I think that that just deserves at least a round of applause for that.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
I have one question for you. The photos, can those, the wildlife photos, can those be viewed somewhere?
Let me make a note of that and see if we can get back to you on that.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, for sure. I think a lot of people would be interested in that. Just the three you had on there were pretty incredible.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else, real quick?
So much for everything you do. I appreciate that you send us your meeting notes so we're able to follow the progress and all the stuff that you do. I also just appreciation for the trilingual, bilingual signs. I know that a community member helped with those, and it takes a lot of volunteer hours to make this happen. So, just thank you for all of your hard work.
You're welcome, and thank you. Thank you.
Again, yeah, thank you so much, and was at the picnic last year. So, I appreciate a free lunch. So, thank you so much for that free lunch. I hope to be there this year, and just thank you for all the work. I love Daily Ranch. I'm up there every week. Thank you.
Anybody else want to join me riding your bike up to the ranch for that one? Love you now.
Okay. Next up is the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation, the Rick Vote Legacy Scholarships. And I would invite the council down with me for this one to shake the hands of the award winners. Time's yours.
Well, good evening. I'm Rick Vote, and as the recently retired fire chief for the city of Escondido, I want to thank everyone for the invitation and warm welcome back tonight to celebration of the presentation of the scholarship awards to several deserving EMTs who will no doubt serve Escondido for many years to come as paramedics. Towards the end of my tenure as fire chief, every fire department, including Escondido, was having a very difficult time recruiting and hiring new paramedics. It's a very rigorous program, and it's challenging, so the numbers of licensed and qualified paramedics were getting low. About that time, oh, one other thing, it's kind of expensive to go to paramedic school, too, especially because the program's so rigorous, it's really difficult, if not impossible, to hold a job and generate income while you're trying to pay your rent and buy food, take care of your family, pay tuition. So, but I have to say, well-trained and educated paramedics are crucial in every community to respond to numerous medical emergencies that happen every day. And in Escondido, and I just confirmed this yesterday, paramedics respond to an average of 40 medical emergencies every single day in this city. They're very much needed. I have to say, the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation has been supporting Escondido over the years with examples of them purchasing and donating needed equipment, including supplemental personal protective equipment during the pandemic and buying radios, VHF radios that are used during wildfires for our personnel to use when there's a large-scale wildfire. But last year, Joan and Frank from the foundation approached all the county fire chiefs and asked, what is one thing that's a really big problem for all the fire departments that we could help with? And our answer was pretty unanimous. We need help recruiting and training people to enter the ranks from the bottom to replace the old guys who are retiring out, like me. And last year, on the day that I retired, Frank and Joan from the Fire Foundation announced they were establishing a scholarship to provide assistance to Escondido EMTs who attend paramedic schools, and they were kind enough to establish it in my name. Fortunately, not a memorial scholarship, just in my name. And I'll be honest with you, though, I think what Joan's plan, Joan's up here taking a picture, I think what her plan was is if she named it after me, she might get me to donate to it. And you know what? It worked. And I have to make a small, quick pitch here that this fund has been established and continues, and anyone, individuals, businesses, anyone can donate to the fund by going to the foundation's website, clicking on donations, and design it to go to this scholarship fund, and that money is 100% guaranteed to go to support EMTs from this community to work as paramedics in Escondido. Right, Frank?
Correct.
So, before I close, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the Escondido Firefighters Association has always provided some tuition assistance for some Escondido EMTs to attend paramedic school, but their funds are certainly limited. This Fire Foundation Scholarship is providing the opportunity for several of EMTs that you're going to see here tonight to attend school, focus on gaining the skills and knowledge that will be needed to literally save lives in Escondido. Please, take a moment and help me thank Frank, Frank Alt, President of the Board, and Joan Jones, the Executive Director of the San Diego Fire Foundation, for this wonderful scholarship that's going to benefit our city of Escondido.
Well, as I mentioned, I'm Frank Alt, Board Chair of the San Diego Regional Fire Foundation. We've been in existence now 35 years, and we've always had the singular mission of trying to make San Diego as safe as it can be and trying to find out what are the greatest needs in our community. And we started with a lot of the volunteer departments needing fire hose, needing tires on their trucks, and things like that. Recently, as Chief Alt mentioned, when we talk to them, they say we need paramedics. And this is a national issue. It's not just a shortage here in our region, it's throughout. And we started a couple of years ago doing some scholarships for Fire Academy and for paramedics. We've now done, including the three tonight, 17 of them. And we started with one department and kind of went to a second one. We didn't have a lot of funds. We don't have an endowment. We have to raise all of our money. But this year, we were able to do three here in Escondido, partially because of the fact we just received, and we can officially announce as of today, the Conrad Previs Foundation has provided us a $200,000 grant for paramedic scholarships over the next two years. We also have funds that have come from individuals, businesses, but also when we disbanded all the volunteer departments in the county, two of them provided us all the excess funds they had left when they disbanded. So, we got 70-something thousand from the Mountain Laguna Volunteer Department for the singular purpose of training young firefighters. So, we have that for these scholarships as well. So, I am pleased today, really, to announce that we are doing three $5,000 scholarships for EMTs here in Escondido. And I'm going to ask them to come up as I call their names. Not to pick any order, just the order that they're handed to me. So, Melanie, Brian, would you please come up? Next, Jose Laquín. And lastly, Xiaoli. In closing, I want to just mention one kind of unique antidote, and that is that Chief Alt and I both started as volunteers in the same little fire department in Palm Desert, California. I just happened to start about 20, 30 years before he did, but we both have our roots in the fire service in the same area. So, I want to thank you, Mayor, for having us here tonight to do the presentation, as well as your city council. And Joan, did you want to take some pictures? Come on, Rick, get in the middle here. Oh, yeah.
Before you sit back down, I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for your service to Escondido. We really appreciate all the work that you did here. Your legacy here will truly be long-lasting. It's incredible, and we appreciate you coming back and still being a part of the community. And with that, I'd like to offer you a certificate of recognition and appreciation for that service. Yes? All right. Thank you, everybody, for that. We will now move on to our report at a close session.
Close session report.
Thank you. Non-agenda public comments. To first Leia.
I'm just going to read this. My name is Leia Peshotu. I'm the owner of Laurel Glen Boutique at 158 East Grand Avenue, corner of Calmia and Grand. I have been at this location for 11 years. As a person who also resides in Escondido and a business owner, I am passionate about this community on Grand as well. Thank you for allowing me to express my views on the construction Phase Two on Grand Avenue. I ask that you please listen to what I'm expressing to all of you today. Last Friday, three individuals came into my store to let me know that Phase Two to let me know that phase two of construction for downtown Escondido is scheduled for September 30th, only two weeks away. I was shocked and devastated by this news. That would be the start of a demolition on my block. I was quite surprised that I had not been notified by the city about this before. From a business standpoint, as a business retailer and owner for over 30 years, this would impact my business and everyone else affected on the street. This Christmas holiday season is not the best time to dig up sidewalks and endure constant riveting, constant noisy trucks, constant dirt and dust in the air. What person will want to visit Grand Avenue to visit Laurel Glen Boutique and enjoy some holiday shopping? All of us on the street will suffer at this major loss of, I call, people traffic into our store. Who wants to shop in a war zone? People are not easily rerouted, and this seems to be a wonderful solution when I'm being told of the construction. There will be a major loss of people traffic, simple as that. We will not hear our beautiful Christmas music for a calm shopping experience. The door will have to be closed at all times due to the loud noise, dirt, and dust. Customers will not be able to ignore the constant chaos just outside the door. Again, a virtual war zone. Please, can, this needs to be, this project needs to be postponed until January 2025. When I spoke to an individual at the DBA, she commented to me that I haven't attended the meetings to know about this. That shouldn't be a reason for the city not to notify the businesses on Grand Avenue in a more timely fashion. I explained to my fellow businessperson that I have a husband with dementia, and his needs are constant. This is why I'm not able to attend the DBA meetings. In addition, I work a great deal of hours for my business. I'm really a dedicated business owner. I do benefit the block as I have been an established business here open seven days a week for 11 years. I'm always directing our customers to various locations on a daily basis for lunch. My favorites, the French Bakery Great Desserts, the Grand Tea Room for a really fun and different dining experience, and so on.
I hate to cut you off there. Your time has expired. However, can I share the copy of that that I received earlier with my colleagues?
If I could speak double time, I would, but I mean, I just, I just have a short, brief.
How many more public comments do we have? Just one?
Additional public.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate that, Mr. White. So the Grand Tea Room is a really fun and different dining experience and so on, the best hairdressers and so on. Getting people to walk up and down the street so they can see the various shops is always on my mind because it benefits everyone. Retailers wait all year for the holiday season, which includes Halloween, Thanksgiving, Black Friday, and Small Business Saturday, as that is when income is the greatest. We see more customers during the month of November and December than any other time of year. It covers the major expenses to bring in the Christmas merchandise. I spent $25,000 in Christmas. That's a retail store, that's what we do. I spent another $30,000 on merchandise for gifts, clothes, and jewelry. I will not be able to recoup this investment or have money to buy for January. I will not have the money to replenish merchandise after the holidays to start the new year. Without the Christmas holiday business, our business is doomed. How will we benefit from Black Friday? How will we benefit from Small Business Saturday, which is the number one business day of the year? When we were in the midst of COVID, we were able to survive with various grants. We got through it only because of those grants. Will the city be awarding businesses affecting by these demolition grants? Probably not. Recently, when going up Grand Avenue, I'm almost done, thank you. Recently, when going up Grand from Escondido Boulevard, I counted 16 empty storefronts, approximately 16 empty storefronts, and I don't want to be number 17. I noticed on the city council meeting today that on the agenda was how to increase retention and attraction of people and businesses of Escondido. My comment is, do not have major construction on a major holiday. Understand who the local businesses are that are currently here and what they bring to Grand Avenue. Understand and support their needs. Help us thrive with that support. I have survived COVID, still surviving the homeless experience, but I'm not confident I'll survive this Christmas holiday. Please, I implore you to postpone the construction till after the holidays. But I want you to know, I'm excited about the improvements and the beautification of Grand Avenue. I just ask you to wait three months. Thank you, Dan, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to finish.
Her next speaker is Luisa.
My name is Luisa Magoon. I own a business downtown, the Grand Tea Room. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Downtown Business Association. And I totally understand Leia's, how she feels about this because it is going to be difficult for the businesses downtown to have this done during the holiday season. However, we had a meeting this morning with a couple of the city people and a consultant, and they made it quite clear that if we wait until after the beginning of the year, construction costs would be a lot higher. And with a city in the financial problems that they're having right now, that's the last thing we need because we want to stretch that money as far as we possibly can. So it's probably inevitable that this is going to happen. However, we want to make sure that the city does everything that they can to make sure that those sidewalks are open so that people can walk up and down without having to trip over whatever. Do the construction maybe later in the day? I don't know if that can be done. Make sure that a lot of marketing is done to tell people downtown is open. Please come and shop. And we spoke to a city person this morning, and she's going to do everything she can to help us with that. Now, the Downtown Business Association is also planning several events. We're going to do Small Business Saturday, and we're going to do it up big. We're going to have a trick or treat. We're going to have a Taste of Downtown. We want to plan that. We're going to do a scavenger hunt. There are several things that we're going to do and plan to make sure that we bring people downtown. So we just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that. However, in the meantime, we really have to get the word out that downtown is open for business and that make sure that the construction companies know that they have to make those sidewalks very accessible to people because we do not want to discourage people from coming downtown. Thank you.
Thank you both. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Items one through nine are on consent tonight. Did anybody have anything they needed to pull from consent? And if not, I will move to approve items one through nine and ask for a second. Have a second, please open the voting.
Voting is open. Mayor White and Deputy Mayor Garcia didn't register your votes, I'm so sorry. terribly sorry about that. Deputy Mayor Garcia, do you vote in the affirmative?
He has few times.
Okay, perfect, that's all we need to know. Motion approved, five zero.
Okay, item 10 is the Public Art Strategic Plan and Annual Work Plan. Thank you, Robert, thank you, Carol, the time's yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Robert Rhodes. I am the Assistant Director of Community Services, and I am joined today by Carol Rogers, the Chairperson of the Public Art Commission. Today, we're going to be sharing with you the Public Art Strategic Plan and the 2024, 2025 Annual Work Plan. Tonight, we'll be asking you to approve Resolution 2024-118, adopting the Public Art Strategic Plan and Annual Work Plan as recommended by the Public Art Commission. On the agenda this evening will be a review of the 2324 Public Art Projects, as well as the development of the Public Art Strategic Plan and the 2024, 2025 Annual Work Plan and Associated Budgets, as well as the next steps for implementation, and finally, the staff recommendation. Before we get into the details of the Public Art Strategic Plan, I think it's important to review the funding mechanism for public art in Escondido. So public art is funded through development impact fees and not the general fund. These fees are paid by developers when projects are brought forth. However, the developer also has the opportunity to, or the option, to provide public art of their own in lieu of paying those particular fees. The general intention of this is to promote art and enhance opportunities for economic vitality while commemorating local values, history, community pride, and identity. These, since these are development impact fees, we are legally limited by state law in the scope in which they are spent. This means that only new public art accessible in public view or art education programs are allowed to be used for this type of funding. Unfortunately, this leaves a key part of preserving our existing public art as ineligible to receive and utilize this funding for maintenance and repair. I will now turn it over to Carol, and she's going to talk about our public projects for the 2324 fiscal year.
So you're looking at a few of the murals that were completed last year, and I would love to tell you stories about all of them, but my absolute favorite in this grouping is the Global Roots mural. The thing that makes this one so unique is it was a gift to our community by a company called Mural Mosaics out of Canada, and it was an opportunity that came to us while I was doing research to do a community mural. So this one just, it came to us, it was a gift, and I think that it brought a wonderful story to our community. This is, we have Esco Alley Art here. I think you're all familiar with Esco Alley Art. These murals are done by individual artists. This was something that started during the pandemic. We thought this would be a temporary project that would just be in one alley, and it's been so popular that it has grown to several alleys. Couple of cool things, we got, Escondido got a mention in the New York Times for this project. And we recently were contacted by Kayak. You know, that's a travel aggregator site. They reached out to us and said, we are creating a destination page for Escondido. We want Esco Alley Art to be on that page. So we're on the map. These are murals that, we have had a relationship with the Escondido Unified High School District, where we grant funds annually for students to create murals. All of these are located at the Washington Skate Park. The one on the top is the most recent. This one is being celebrated on the 20th of this month. It's Friday, Saturday, excuse me, 10 o'clock in the morning? 10 o'clock in the morning. They are designed by students. There is a competition that chooses the mural that will be painted, and then the students participate in actually creating these murals. So this is a very meaningful project in the educational realm also. This is another one, this, The Hummingbirds by Brenda Townsend. This is a long-awaited mural that will, it was approved for funding in 2023, and because of some communication problems with the building owner, it's taken us a while to get there. But this will start, projected to start on October the 1st. And Brenda is an artist that works fairly quickly, so I would guess that we'll be celebrating this mural right around when we're doing our Small Business Saturday. Escondido Expressions, this is one of the most meaningful projects, I think, that our Public Art Commission has done in recent years. We had a subcommittee that worked on this. They selected utility boxes throughout the city and went out and physically recruited artists to get this work done. I love this because it just sprinkles art through our city. Some of our, we have some of our favorite artists represented here. Zane Kincaid, of course, is in here, and Suzanne Nicolaius and Brenda Townsend, and there's more to come in the next year's work plan. This was the second phase of the Escondido Expressions. This one, there's a great story in this one. I'm going to try and be quick because I know we don't, we don't have a lot of time. Notice the Foodie Dreams. This one is so cool. This guy was painting, this is over near Pyology Valley Parkway. The artist was out there painting this, and he was reported to the police for graffiti. So it became this social media phenomenon. It's great. That's, you know, it's one of those stories where any publicity is good publicity. So we've since created signage to prevent that kind of stuff, but this became a very popular box.
So the city, as you can see, really has a vast public art collection. And over the years, unfortunately, our records are a little bit incomplete. And thus, in collaboration with our current community, the city is developing a tool that will actually crowdsource some missing information to be able to add pieces as well as a part of the collection, pending staff, ultimate staff review. So here's a quick glimpse of what that art inventory page is going to look like, as well as the associated submission form. So we are expecting this to go live on the city's website within the next month. And once it is ready for distribution, you'll be able to, we'll make sure that we get that to the council as well as to the public. And this is a really amazing piece that was developed in-house by our staff, where you can actually click on those, you can zoom in to the various points on the map. So we'll be getting that to everyone. It's an amazing tool for us to be able to continue to use. So now we'd like to transition into talking about the development of the Public Art Strategic Plan. So in the creation of the Public Art Strategic Plan, we did a really extensive public outreach effort, which took place throughout the course of about nine months. And during that period of time, there took the opportunity to have a really clear assessment of what the public art program's strengths and challenges were up to this point. This allowed us to develop a solutions-based program and foundation that we incorporated into the plan specifically. It was noted, for example, that our public art commissioners were extremely engaged in conducting research, contacting artists, as well as developing new opportunities like the Escondido Expressions Program. There's also dedicated funding through those development impact fees I talked about earlier. And since the beginning of this calendar year, staff have been able to create some significant operational efficiencies to be able to manage projects allowing for a more effective implementation of our public art program. Several challenges, we were noted as well. And that included that the previous process led to really an unfair advantage of some artists over others, wherein there was no clear procedure for conducting a specific call for artists. So there is also a lack of curation of our public art resources owned by the city, leading to kind of a more disorganized and fragmented inventory list of public art, hence that previous tool that we are going to be using. And then over the years, the funding has also accumulated as the commission has really only spent about $150,000 annually on average. Furthermore, the public outreach was limited to only those individuals that may have been attending Public Art Commission meetings, and that's provided that the public was even aware that a public art project was even being reviewed at that time. Moreover, that due to a lot of regulatory requirements, the public art funding cannot be used for maintenance and upkeep, unfortunately, of our existing artwork. And then finally, there is really minimal interaction between the Public Art Commission and the city council. As the city council, you were not provided with any type of regular updates on these particular projects and what was going on. So that leads us to the solutions as far as what we are going to do. And considering with all the community input that we have been gathering over the course of this period of time, we have developed a solid annual work plan. We as the Public Art Commission, that is not me. That is this gal right here, Public Art Commission. So through this process that we, the Public Art Commission will be developing the annual work plan. They'll be allocating funding for new art and art education programs, identifying specific art solicitations. There will be There will be creating a transparent art solicitation process, or basically a call for artists. The addressing, maintenance, and deaccessioning of various artwork, as well as to provide regular updates to the city council for review and adoption. So with that, I would like to turn it back over to Carol, and she's gonna go through the Public Art Strategic Plan.
So our vision statement, whoops. Our vision statement. "We are a city where art, inspired by the community, welcomes visitors and residents, creating a fun and lively environment that celebrates all things Escondido, heralding our past and manifesting our future." Our values are art that unifies, art that celebrates, art that educates, art that remembers, and art that inspires. Our strategic plan goals, we want to keep the momentum going. We want to be clearly communicating and celebrate public art. We'll prioritize community-centric art and catalyze economic development. We'll ensure evaluation, monitoring, and maintenance of all of our public art and promote education and community engagement.
So now's the opportunity where we're gonna dive directly into what our annual work plan is for the 2425 year.
Okay, so art solicitation. What we are going to do, we have decided that we have four areas that we're going to focus on with regard to soliciting artwork. We have, as the Escondido Expressions Program, it's 15 more of the utility boxes. We have the Escondido Creek Trail, which is much anticipated in our community. The Grand Avenue Project, that primarily is going to be a major sculpture in the roundabout at Broadway and Grand. And then murals, if they are appropriate. Art education, we are planning an Art and Culture Creativity Month. The entire month of April, we are going to be celebrating art and culture. We will be producing a public art education pamphlet. What we're getting at here is something that will lead people to the resources that will allow them to investigate all of the art that we have. We will continue with the Escondido Unified High School District, murals. Art maintenance is, is top of mind, as we've already mentioned. High on the list is the community sculpture that's at Tulip and Valley, Queen Calafeia. And we're, we are looking to develop a revenue source so that we have ongoing revenue coming in to take care of our artwork. We will have to look at deaccessioning. That will be something that's recommended on an annual basis as we spend time evaluating artwork and deciding what can be repaired and what cannot.
So the Public Art Strategic Plan has developed a, really a defined process in managing the implementation of public art projects in Escondido. And this is a pretty extensive way for us to be able to do that. This all starts in January, when the Public Art Commission appoints the subcommittee that will be responsible for developing that annual work plan. Then February through April, that subcommittee, in coordination with city staff, will work on that plan together. That plan will be presented to the Public Art Commission for review and approval in May timeframe. And then here's where that interaction with the city council comes into play. July is when that public art annual work plan will be presented to the city council for review and adoption, as well as being able to review all of the information that was, all the projects that were completed in that previous year. The art solicitation process would begin for all new artwork in August. Then October, we would be looking at conducting public input and recommendations. Then in the November timeframe, the Public Art Commission will meet, taking into consideration information from the various subcommittees, as well as the community, and that's where they will be awarding the funding and the projects. December is when the city staff takes over, and that's when we go through our administrative processes and ensuring that we are going to be signing all that information. And then in January is when we would expect the work to begin. So with all of that, what you're seeing before you is the general information about what our next steps forward are going to look like. In September, so just in a couple of days, we are going to start the process for conducting that call for artists for the Escondido Expressions Program. We also anticipate that the art education pamphlet would start that conversation in November. We would be conducting our Creek Trail Call for Artists in January. Then in February is where we start the preparation work for the Art Culture and Creativity Month, which happens every April. In March is when we anticipate conducting the call for artists for the Grand Avenue Roundabout Project. And then in April is when the commission will be discussing the EUHSD student murals, because that is normally taken care of during the summer break, is when they would go and paint those murals. And then by May, we would have potentially a public art maintenance plan. So next, with this comprehensive plan, I think the Public Art Commission is also recommending approval of the annual work plan budget to align with the Public Art Strategic Plan. So this slide outlines the anticipated public art funding budget for the 2425 fiscal year. You will note that as a part of this budget, the Public Art Commission has recommended a significant investment in two key projects. That include the Escondido Creek Trail as an important community space that runs through the heart of this city. They also is important with the Grand Avenue Roundabout Project as a defining centerpiece for public art in Escondido. The hope is that these projects will become a catalyst for tourism and economic vitality in Escondido and creating us as a leader in public art within this region. So at this time, staff is recommending the adoption of Resolution 2024-118, approving the Public Art Strategic Plan Annual Work Plan, including the associated budget adjustments for the public art funds to be reallocated in support of the 2425 Annual Plan. That concludes our presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments? No, none? Okay, I'll kick us off on this. First, I want to thank the Public Art Commission for all of the work that you all have put into this. I know you've been working on it for quite some time, and it's very impressive. And thank you to the staff who also played an integral, integral role in that. Truly much appreciated. Escondido has so much to offer in the way of art, and up until now, there was really nothing to tie it all together. And just having this small look into that vision for the future, it's very exciting to see what's gonna happen over the next several years as the plan is implemented. And I am very, very excited about that. So again, thank you for all the hard work. I don't have any questions, but I will make the motion to approve the Public Art Strategic Plan and Annual Work Plan, and ask for a second before opening it up for discussion. Perfect, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you all very much. Thank everyone who has participated this, in this. Thank you everyone for your patience as this was developed over a long period of time. And there was, this is like a renewal or renaissance of, of public art here in Escondido. There was a period of time where it kind of faded into the, the shadows, funding and other reasons, but this is, this, this is a catalyst for the new foundation moving forward. I don't see it ever going away, shouldn't say that, but it seems like this is going to be enough to keep it going for a very, very long time. Again, thank everyone who participated in this and for management, for allocating resources to help facilitate this as well. A lot of time, energy, effort, and passion is evident. So again, thank you. It's so extensive and it's so all-inclusive. It's, it's a phenomenal presentation and a phenomenal plan. So thank you again.
Thank you for all your hard work and for the presentation.
Thank you, great presentation. And just thank you to our Public Art Commissioners and just everyone in the community who loves art has contributed to improving the art scene in Escondido. I can really say that we're a mural, becoming a mural city and just public art everywhere. So I, I love it. A couple of questions. First of all, I just want to also highlight that I love the community collaboration effort, the one to crowdsource art throughout the city. So I think that's great, really excited about that. It's a participatory way for, for anyone to, to contribute to the work. And then also, just if you could walk me through the, the call for artists, what does that process look like? Is it, is there a listserv? Is there, is there a specific place on the website? Will it be social media outreach? Kind of what's, what's the process for the call of artists, call for artists?
Absolutely, thank you for, for asking. It's, it's kind of an all-of-above approach, essentially is what it is. We have built over the last six to 12 months an extensive network of art organizations and outlets for us to be able to take that information and distribute to them. They'll be distributed to the Public Art Commissioners. That information will be housed on the city's website. There are also a couple of national websites that artists that are nationally known typically will go to to look for call for artists or this type of information. And so that will be placed on those as well.
Okay, good, great to know. And is there a place that, and maybe an artist, if there's not a curtain, a curtain, current call for artists, that someone can say, "Hey, you know, I want to be included, you know, in the announcement." Is there a place for them to be able to sign up for future information?
So on, we are currently also in the process of revamping the public art page on the city's new website. And that's the, that's why we're holding off just a couple more days to ensure that that, the website is actually implemented before we move forward with that, that announcement, the call for artists specifically for the Escondido Expressions Program. Once that's up and running, when you go to that website, there will be an opportunity for you to be able to contact the public art staff. That would be myself and one of our team to be able to be included in that.
Great, good to know. Because I, because I know occasionally artists will reach out and say, "Hey, any opportunities?" And it's just, it would be nice to know the appropriate place to direct them to. But yeah, I think this is exciting. I appreciate the, having an intentional work plan with the budget and the timeframe, and that we'll be able to get a presentation once a year. So thank you for all the work. I know it's taken years to get here, and it's just been so impressive and so exciting. So I support everything that you all are doing, thank you.
Well, it goes without saying, thank you. This is an incredible amount of work, and the fruits of the labor is clear here. Thank you so much. I quickly would like to ask a couple of questions. Under the values, art that unifies, I, I love the way it's written, okay? It's awesome. Art that unifies, art that celebrates, educates, remembers, and inspires. At times, at least in my limited experience, it seems to me that some artists or some art would find itself at odds with one value versus another value. How would you, or how does this, is it proposed to find a solution to that?
Okay. So, let's see. I would start by saying that that is one of the reasons why we have seven public art commissioners. Because we find that, for the most part, we are not all the same. We don't all see the world the same way. And when artwork is brought before us, there are a lot of questions about whether it truly represents our community, whether there is anything in there that might be offensive to our community. We don't always get it right. We will start with the artist's call. That, for example, when we are doing the call for those utility boxes, some of the language, this is not going to be exactly correct. Some of the language says that the artwork should reflect the culture and the architecture of the location. So we're looking for the artists to do some homework to understand where they are putting their art and represent the people that will experience it for the most part. Does that help?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm taking is that basically it'll come to the commission and you all will take a vote.
Yes, we will, we are hoping that we will get several submissions. Yeah, a lot of words for, for that. We'll get several submissions, we'll go through them. We will then decide how many of them we bring to the public and allow the public to make a choice also. So many levels.
Wonderful, thank you. Another question over here under the annual work plan timeline. January, Public Art Commission will appoint two or three members to an annual work plan subcommittee. Are you thinking only commission members? Or will you include any community members in that?
Community members cannot serve on the subcommittees. They can attend subcommittee meetings, but they cannot be members of subcommittees. So we, the public is invited to, to participate.
Wonderful, thank you. right at the beginning, defining roles and responsibilities, as I understand it, it's the responsibility of the city council to provide direction, but policy recommendations come from the commission. And here it states that, that we would be providing the policy direction. So I would want to make that nuance clear, unless I've misunderstood the years that I've been on commissions.
What page is that on?
That is on page 73.
One moment, please.
Are you, I'm sorry, the page number you're referring to is in the, is that in the staff report? Or is that?
It's in the plan itself.
I don't know, it says 73. Item 10 on the top.
Appears to be the staff report, staff report. I, I apologize, you do not have the staff report in front of me, but I do have the Public Art Strategic Plan in front of me. Would you, could you restate and rephrase the question?
You want me to look for it in this?
Is your, is your question, who provides the policy direction? Was that in?
Well, I want to clarify in a manner of speaking, yeah. It's, as I understand, it's the city council's, we provide direction, but we receive from you policy recommendations. So here, provide policy direction is kind of unclear to me at least, so that's why I was looking for some clarity. Does that make sense?
It absolutely does make sense, and I'm looking over at our city attorney. Would a, would a commission of appointees make policy recommendations?
No, so if I'm reading where you're looking at, so it's the package page 73 at the very top. City Council shall appoint the Public Art Commission, provide policy direction, and adopt the annual work plans that we're talking about. So I think with respect to the policy direction provided there would be, we would like you to do more murals, we'd like you to do something like that. And then you would be adopting the work plan. But with respect to selection, art selection, so forth, that's gonna be them. Does that make sense? Does that answer your?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. So thank you very much for, for that clarity. That concludes my questions.
And we do have one public speaker, Mr. Stone. Time is yours.
Thank you very much, it's an honor to be here. I first want to thank these two beautiful people. They did a fabulous job today, and you should be glad you have them on your side. I have three items that were not talked about today, but there are definitely items that you need to consider. Michael? You? You're a lawyer? The intellectual property rights and who owns them on all those murals? Because if those of you don't know what happened in Carlsbad a few years ago, they commissioned a public art piece, they put it up. The residents of Carlsbad objected to it. When they went to try and take it down, they had to pay a million-dollar penalty for taking it down. So since I know that we don't have a whole lot of money... So since I know that we don't have a whole lot of money, I think that you need to take a look at that and be very clear with every public artist on ownership and what their rights are and what they aren't. The next thing that concerns me is the repository for the art that comes down. Where is that? Where does that art, when you take a piece of art down, where does it go? Can you answer that? Can anybody answer that? I don't think so because I haven't heard anybody talk about it. So that's another thing that you have to consider. You own this art. By agreement, you own the art. And you can't just take it down and throw it away. If you do that, you will find yourself in trouble. The last thing that I haven't heard is, I'd really like to hear this because I'm a businessman. I think you guys need an entire inventory of every single piece of public art that is within the domain of the city of Escondido and you need to get a, some type of appraisal on it. I think you used to have a member on the board who also sat on the board at Palomar College, Nina, right? Was that her name, Nina? And so here's what happened at Palomar College. Their students would make art and they donated to Palomar College. And Palomar College did a very good job of preserving that art and cataloging it and getting it appraised. And Palomar College is now sitting on like $30 million in art. So all these art pieces, you guys didn't pay for them, but they have a value. And as those artists' careers go up, the value of that art goes up. And you can decide if you're going to hold on to it, you're going to trade it for other art, you're going to sell it. That's all stuff that you guys have to decide. But I promise you, all this art that you're seeing go up in our city will increase in value over the years and you need to be prepared to address that. So all I got to say.
Thank you. I do have a question now. So some of those are really good recommendations. Is that something that can be agendized and can this plan be amended as we go?
I think there's a plan and then there's specific questions. We'll get some answers to the specific questions and we'll follow up on that, but I don't think they have a direct bearing on the actual work plan and the strategic plan. They have some, they have some value in general conversation and, and yes, we're managing that. And I know that's one of Mr. McGinnis's, is in the contracts.
Ready to, I'm poised to hit my button because we do, we do spend a lot of time on the Visual Rights Act and making sure that we have copyright and we have all of the protections. So to the extent that we are done with a piece, that we know what we're allowed to do with it. So we do spend a lot of time on that issue.
Thank you. Okay, please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you both again, much appreciated. Okay, that brings us to item 11, which is a resolution in support of Prop 36. Real quick to start us off here. California is suffering from a continued explosion in crime and trafficking of deadly hard drugs like fentanyl because of the people committing these crimes do not face serious consequences. In 2014, we passed Prop 47, the reduced theft and hard drug possession, that reduced theft and hard drug possession penalties. I would like to think that there were some good intentions behind it, but it did lead to a lot of unintended consequences like increased, increased repeat and often organized retail theft, store closings, locked up items, and difficulty convincing people to seek drug and mental health treatment. Prop 36, while I don't think goes far enough, at least restores some bit of balance into the equation. I think Prop 36 evens out and makes our justice system that much more fair and creates effective tools for holding individuals accountable for their crimes and helping those who suffer from addiction to hard drugs get the necessary treatment to begin their lives. Yeah, with that being said, Chief Arso, can I call you up here just for some questions? I'd like to, I'd like to paint a picture of what's happening not just in our community, but you know, throughout the state of California. But I know there is, this has had detrimental effects in Escondido. After the passage of Prop 4, I guess before the passage of Prop 47, if somebody was caught with personal use amount of drugs, what would happen to them? Did we at least have the ability to take them to jail?
Yeah, good evening for the record, Ed Arso, your chief of police. The answer to that is, yes, they would, they would go to jail. A small amount of marijuana for many, many years, even long before this, was not treated with a felony criminal penalty like we're talking about with hard drugs such as methamphetamine, heroin, that sort of thing. So you know, at the beginning of my police career, if I stopped somebody who had a small personal use amount of methamphetamine, that person would be arrested, they would go to jail. Ultimately, in California, that person would be given the opportunity to go into drug court, to go into some sort of rehab. And really with a kind of a characteristic approach, Prop 47 took that away. So as an example of the impact it has in Escondido, in about the past 18 months, my officers have arrested or cited out, which I'll explain here in a second, almost 1,000 people for drug possession related offenses just in our city.
In what timeframe was that?
In about 18 months. And so of those, almost 1,000, those would have been 1,000 people that we were able to remove from the community and try to get them some help and get them off the streets. But instead today, because of the current landscape and law, they're issued a citation and they walk away.
What happens if they don't show up to court or don't pay the fine?
Yeah, it's interesting because you also have some dynamics here too with, with the court system, our jail system. So for example, that person, if they don't show up to court for their citation, which is highly likely, very few of them are ever going to show up for court, they're issued a warrant. And then most of the time that warrant, when we encounter that person, it's what is known in our county as a non-bookable misdemeanor warrant, which just means that the person has a warrant, which is supposed to be a mandate to appear before a judge. But instead, we walk away because we can't take them to jail for the non-bookable warrant. So it's just this repeated cycle of the police encountering people with almost nothing that they can do and it's incredibly frustrating.
And is it true we have some people running the streets in Escondido who have multiple warrants or even a dozen or more warrants?
I would say the overwhelming majority of your current homeless population in Escondido has some sort of a warrant related to a theft or a drug related offense.
On the theft side of things, so if somebody is caught right now stealing, what was the number, $950 or less worth of items and they're caught, what happens?
They're issued a citation and they are released.
And if they do it again the same day?
They're issued a citation and they are released.
And does that happen in our community?
It happens repeatedly.
Okay. That, that is the extent of my questions. I don't know if my colleagues will have some for you as well, but I at least wanted to paint that picture that we have removed the stick entirely in the state of California. In my own personal experience, after so many offenses, I was given the opportunity to either go to jail for several months or go to rehab. But we've removed even that. And anybody that's been involved in recovery understands that at least in part, the first step to recovery is to admit that your life has become unmanageable. And what you're witnessing right now is an epidemic of people who do not have the ability to manage their lives. And we removed the stick to do anything at all with these people. And so they're just allowed to perpetually commit these crimes and live a life in addiction on the streets with absolutely no consequences or even help offered. I am of the mindset that jail is not an appropriate rehab, long-term jail sentences for simply drug use. That's not justice. But if somebody does not have the ability to manage their life, society needs to take control and manage it temporarily until they get their senses back and then they're welcome to do whatever they want after that. I, I'm proud to bring this resolution in support of Prop 36 forward. And with that, I will move to approve this resolution and ask for a second before we move on. Thank you. Perfect. And I'll open it up for discussion amongst my colleagues or questions for the chief.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Appreciate your support of this. I think DA Stephens in her presentation was very detailed in explaining both the positive aspects of this as well as the areas where it falls woefully short. It's anything but a perfect proposition or an amendment to Prop 47, but it's the best that we have right now and it's something we absolutely positively need to support, to endorse, and to encourage so that it can pass and we can have at least a semblance of sanity restored and law and order to not just our city, our county, but our entire state. So thank you very much.
Thank you. There were two things I forgot to add to my comments. I know we share similar frustrations when members of the community say that we're not doing anything to address this and we are doing everything we can within our power to address this. You can write all the tickets in the world, but if there is no consequences, it just doesn't do anything. But on the other side of this, this has a very broad coalition, bipartisan, not just by public safety advocates, but this is supported by dozens of social justice and community advocates, justice in victim organizations, Democrats, Republican elected officials statewide. And I would encourage everybody here, when the time comes, to fill in the bubble on your ballot to please support Prop 36.
Yeah, I just want to, thank you so much. I want to echo that. You know, I spoke at length with Chief Arso as well about, you know, what it is that we're able to do in the community. And this is, I think, the right, the correct, a correct step towards what we need to do in order to be able to have the ability to enforce, well, justice and the law. Unfortunately, I think there's so much that, as was mentioned before, it does fall short, but I think that this is going to be the right first step. And it's really important because as the mayor just said, you know, this is supported unanimously, almost unanimously from people regardless of their background, regardless of race or political affiliation. And when I speak with the community, I would say that this is probably the one thing that the community wants the most. So I'm very proud to support this and to have seconded it because I think it shows that we are listening to the people in our community who are frustrated about what they're seeing on a day-to-day basis. And I think that this is something that they really want to see. So thank you so much for bringing this. Thank you, Chief Arso, and thank you for everybody who's going to support this.
All right, well, thank you for bringing this forward. I also appreciate that the district attorney was, you know, came and spoke to us in advance. It was really great to have her come and present to us. I know that you, Chief, you and I have had conversations about this and I kept, I would always ask, you know, what can we do as policymakers, knowing that, you know, Prop 47 had unintended consequences? I personally have witnessed theft of a thousand dollar printer in our community and just the response of like, oh, well, this is just a normal thing that happens was like, you know, it's just not okay and it's not acceptable and something that we should get used to. I also appreciate that there's a broad coalition of elected officials and organizations supporting this. I also went and talked to other elected officials and did additional research on this. I always like to look at the pros and cons, so I didn't see any cons in my research. It's a movement, I think, in the right direction and so I will be supporting this tonight.
Well, as a chaplain with the Escondido Police Department for over the last 17 years, I have actually seen the impact. And while I won't repeat all my comments that I made when DA Stephens was here, I'll just say that this is a welcome change and I want to thank you, chief, because I know you've been instrumental in moving this forward and I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time. And with that, if there's no other questions or concerns, please open the voting.
Voting is open.
Did I get my vote? It's frozen.
Okay, no worries. There it is.
Okay.
Motion approved, five zero.
Item 12, future agendas. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to a future agenda?
Yes, I do. So we heard a lot of speakers come today, or a few speakers come today regarding the construction on Grand. So I'd like to see a presentation on the Grand Vision Project, on the construction and timeline and what it is that we're looking to do. So if we could get that in the next couple of weeks, that'd be great.
We will do that. I just want to remind council that we do break ground on the 30th, so I want to be very clear and that there is, this is funded with federal ARPA dollars and that cost escalation. So we will be proceeding. We are working with the community, but I'm happy to bring a presentation to further the educational efforts.
Understood. I think just people want to hear what it is that the city's going to be doing in order to help reroute and to continue supporting our businesses.
Okay, okay, so you're talking about the actual construction plan, not the vision plan, because we already had the vision plan.
Yeah, yes, just the Grand Vision Project construction, yes.
Clarifying that this is a presentation and not, not because there are real...
Not nothing actionable.
Nothing actionable.
Just a presentation on what we're doing.
I'll second that. All right, and we'll now move on to council members, subcommittee reports and other reports. Councilman Morosco?
Mine's quick and easy because I know my colleagues have more to say in regards to the many activities that have transpired this past week, such as the new facility dedication at Palomar Hospital, campus, El Grito, Mexican Independence Day celebration. I just got to say though, on Sunday, that turnout at Grape Day Park for the Independent Day celebration was phenomenal. It just was so much fun and so encouraging to see so much activity there that day was wonderful. I know that it'll be mentioned about the student mural dedication at Washington Park this coming Saturday, 10 o'clock. And that's all I have to say for today.
Councilman?
So I would just like to report on the Grito. We had a Grito Mexican Day, Independence Day celebration on Friday, the 13th, here at the Center for the Arts. It was extremely well-attended. It was a lot of fun. We had a color guard come from Tijuana comprised, an all-female color guard comprised of students. In addition to that, we had an official that came from Mexico also to share the moment with us. And it was just an incredible, incredible event, a lot of fun, well-organized, and very traditional. So that'll conclude my remarks for tonight and my report. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Yes, thank you. So yes, it was a very busy weekend here in the city. I was able to participate at Grape Day, the Grape Day Festival, lots of folks there. And also El Grito on Sunday, which has to be the largest El Grito event that we have seen. Well into 9 o'clock, there was so many people in the park, like everything, just the entire park was full. And it even brought my introvert father out, which he doesn't usually leave the house, but really excited that he was also at the event. I gave a presentation last week to the Del Lago Academy Senior Government Class, so that was exciting and really impressed with them being so engaged at, you know, 8:30 in the morning. I also got a chance to catch the CCAE theatricals Jersey Boys show, which was phenomenal, phenomenal. Just go see it. And I know that they extended the shows into October, so definitely go check out Jersey Boys and support nonprofit local theater. And they're getting rave reviews in the paper and everywhere else. I also last week attended the regular board meeting for the Air Pollution Control District meeting and the biggest topic on the agenda was the Tijuana sewage crisis. And I know that's been going on for years. There is non-compliance with a water treatment facility because they haven't maintained their infrastructure. It's going to take, you know, some, like millions of federal dollars to fix this issue. And so also just the residents that live in these communities, you know, in IB, Imperial Beach, in certain parts of South Bay have odors every day. It's intolerable. People have to keep their windows closed. There is an effort with the county to disseminate purifiers. So there's just a lot happening there. And there is a dedicated webpage, if anyone wants to know more on this issue, at the Air Pollution Control District's website. And if you need the direct link to that, I'm happy to share that. So, and I will see you this Saturday at Washington Park for the student murals celebration. So please come. And then also, don't forget the coastal, the Coastal Day cleanup events too happening on Saturday. Yeah, thank you.
I heard... I heard great things about El Grito. Fortunately, I wasn't able to go, but I heard it was a phenomenal event. Looking forward to seeing it next year. Grape Day Park was, Grape Day Festival was also just wonderful. It was so good to see so many people out there and to participate. I had my, my one-year-old son stopping grapes. He hated it. On Sunday, we had the Fiesta de Patricios. That was amazing event. I mean, I, I was speaking with the mayor about it. I think we probably doubled the attendance of last year. And it was just so much fun, such good food, such good music. The, the people that were emceeing, I mean, just so much, so full of energy. I, the fact that I had to speak after one of them was just terrible because they just brought so much energy and they just really got the crowd going. I mean, really, they started around twelve-thirty and I think they got the crowd going until like nine-thirty. So it's just great, great event, so much fun. And it was also just really powerful to acknowledge the history of the people here, not just in the state, but in the, in the city as well. And just kind of reflecting on what Mexican Independence Day means, not just to Mexican people, but to the city and kind of tying our, our histories together. So that was really beautiful. And lastly, as always, thank you for, to my community for the privilege of serving you.
All right. It's been a busy few days. Last week, I had the honor to participate in and attend the Palomar Health, Palomar Health Behavioral Health groundbreaking ceremony as a speaker and, you know, with the shovel and lifting up some dirt for photos. That'll be a huge asset to the community. And then later on that day was the Neighborhood Healthcare Dental Expansion Grand Opening. It was great to be a part of that. Thursday night was the Alternatives Medical Clinic Gala in town. And it was, it was truly an inspiring event. I also went to the opening night of Jersey Boys, which was phenomenal. Was not expecting it to be as good as it was, but it was fantastic. Friday night, the El Grito at the Center for the Arts was a phenomenal event. I was invited by councilmember Garcia and didn't really know what to expect, but it was awesome. I would encourage everybody to participate next year. Such a unique opportunity to get insights into the history and culture of Mexico. And it was, it was just phenomenal. Saturday was the Grape Day, Grape Day Five K. And I want to make it clear, I did not get out of bed early enough to participate in the actual Five K, but I was there to hand out medals to the people who did. My family and I attended the Grape Day Festival, which was a ton of fun. Christian and I issued a proclamation to recognize Grape Day Festival Day in Escondido. And, oh, I skipped one, the Chamber Golf Tournament. My team finished one under, but I don't believe this, but the winners supposedly finished twenty-two under, which is insane. And then Sunday was Fiesta de Patricios, which was also fantastic. Angel has done a wonderful job of like doubling the attendance every year for the last couple of years. I couldn't believe how many people and families were there and how long they were there for. It was incredible. But that concludes my report. Thank you. City manager?
I have nothing further to add.
Okay, awesome. Then, any other public comments? All right, this meeting's adjourned.